Good evening. I'd like to call the Board of Education for Wednesday, May 23rd, 2018, to order. Can we have a roll call, please, Mr. Alexandrovich?
Yes, Mrs. Witkowski.
Here.
Mr. Gamble.
Here.
Mr. Nielsen.
Here.
Mrs. Evans.
Here.
Mr. Lewis.
Here.
Mrs. Larson is absent, and I am here.
Thank you, and the meeting has been properly posted. Please rise and join us for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item three on the agenda is recognition of Mr. Jeff Lewis, our former board member, so.
And who else is speaking at that? So, recognition of service presented to Mr. Jeff Lewis, Franklin Public Schools Board of Education, to assert from 2015 to 2018. In recognition for your contribution to Franklin Public Schools, thank you for your support of excellence in student achievement, continuous improvement, and active partnerships to Franklin's families and community members. This was on May 17th, 2018, going over to give this to the students today. Thank you very much.
And item four is community comment. Is there anyone who would like to make any comment tonight? Okay, please come up to the chairs and state your name and address for the record. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Ann Zaberski, 7851 West Canterbury Court here in Franklin. I've been here before. I have three children in the district. My daughters are in eighth grade, sixth grade, and third grade, so I'm kind of widespread. I came two months ago or so to talk about my concern regarding Ben Franklin's third grade class size. Had some significance concerns regarding the number of children and their unique and special needs, and not special needs, just varying needs. After that discussion that we had here and that I was able to have with Ms. Ed Bauer and Mrs. Elliehausen, we were able to have a halftime aid added to our classroom, which we're grateful for, kind of a Band-Aid on a bigger problem, but it has been a pretty decent Band-Aid, and, you know, we're grateful for that. In addition, I understand that we are now reviewing the policy regarding class size, which is as old as our high school seniors, so it's probably time for that to be reviewed, and I'm excited to see where that goes in terms of the future of Franklin's schools. I continue to have concerns about the size of the class in third grade going into fourth grade. I understand the limits of the budget. I am not naive to that, and I do understand that that's probably not going to happen for next year. But as you, as a board, and as the district as a whole, continues to review the class size and thinking about planning for the future, I just would urge you to think of the kids not just as how many bodies can we fit in a classroom, and what does our policy say this, or what are their test scores. They are children who are learning, and we are setting them up for their lifetime of learning. So you have all these great programs at the high school for their future and career readiness, but if they lose their love of learning, or they check out of school in third grade because they are just surrounded by chaos, all the programs at the new middle school or all the programs at the high school aren't going to mean much, because they're going to just kind of be floundering. Have we had growth in third grade this year? Yeah. What I've heard of our test scores, our kids have succeeded regardless of the, you know, dynamic in the classroom. That is a testament to the fabulous third grade teachers that we have at Ben Franklin, who all three of my girls have had. I wish they could continue with them, because I think they're incredible. But it just, it does go back to, they're more than just these kids. They really, they need more than that. And as the kids start coming into kindergarten and things, they are coming with different needs, and it's just, it's not, it's not all about just how many numbers are there. I am a NICU nurse. I work in the intensive care unit. My job varies depending on the needs of my babies. I feel that teachers should have that same flexibility, and based on the needs of their students, we could have more support. I'm grateful that we have the halftime aid now. I understand that at least at this point, we'll have an aid in the fourth grade classroom next year. I'm grateful for that, and I appreciate that. I just hope that, not just looking at Ben Franklin, but looking at Franklin as a whole, as a district of people want their kids to come to, the board and the district will think about that in terms of the needs of the children, and not just hard and fast numbers of how many bodies can we put in a classroom as you go forward. In addition, I just wanted to tell you, I came two months ago for the first time. My kids have been in the district nine years. I've never come to a board meeting before, and I came with a concern. I felt heard. I saw response to that. I really do truly appreciate that from all the different people that I have interacted with. I came for that concern. I continue to come, because I'm kind of fascinated by your process, and especially as a parent who now, next year, will have kids in three schools in the district. I found this to be almost the most valuable place to find out information about the schools. So my second point tonight, and I'm sorry, I'm probably over my three minutes at this point, would be to say, I don't know what else you can do, but work on getting more parents to come. How you, as a board, can communicate with parents in the district. I've been telling everybody I talked to, and I've talked to a lot of people, come to a board meeting. It doesn't sound glamorous, but you know what? You find out a lot of information. So I just would really encourage you, as board members, go out to events, introduce yourself to parents and families, maybe send out more newsletters from the board. I don't know, but I have found this to be one of the most valuable tools of learning about the Franklin Public Schools. So don't mind me if I'm always sitting in the back, because I'll be coming back for more. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mary Thomas.
Thank you.
Are there any other comments this evening? Any other comments? Thank you very much. Item five is approval of the agenda. Do I hear a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Witkowski. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Nielsen. Is there any discussion? Hearing not all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item six is the consent agenda. Would any board member like to remove an item from the consent agenda? Hearing not all those in favor of the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item seven is school board announcements. Do we have any announcements tonight? I just want to thank Mr. Cohen and mention Rachel Fredericks regarding the Saber Business Alliance. Just congratulations. It's just great for our district, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
And then, school board calendar. We have a regular Board of Education meeting on Wednesday, June 20th, 2018, here at the Education and Community Center at 6:00 PM, and a regular Board of Education meeting Wednesday, July 11th, 2018, here at the ECC at 6:00 PM. And then, I want to let the board know that there is no meeting needed now on June 27th, 2018. That's correct, Mr. Milzer, so you can take that off your calendar. And then also for the calendar, the board retreat is Wednesday, August 8th. That is the date that everyone could come, and I want to thank Mrs. Witkowski and Mr. Gamble for rearranging their schedules for that, so. Item nine, reports and presentations and other school business. We have 9A, the Instructional Services Report, International Trip Approvals. Mr. Cohen.
Good evening. In support of our goal of ensuring life, career, college-ready students and graduates, we look to continue to offer diverse educational experiences for our students, and we feel like opportunities for unique travel and, you know, opportunities to kind of further their educational experiences beyond the walls of our high school and our city are really important. And so, Mr. Volo, Mr. Gain, and Ms. Umhefer are here this evening to present a couple of travel requests, so I'd invite them up to the table and to the microphones to talk to you a little bit about those.
Thanks for giving us opportunity to present these, and again, to echo Mr. Cohen's words, it is important for us to offer experiences that I'll let Ellie and Pat speak to more directly in terms of the whys for these trips. But again, as someone who hasn't traveled widely in his life, it's one of those things that I wish I had opportunities like this at various points in my educational career.
Yeah, I'd have to say, I wish I had more of those opportunities myself. I'm just finishing up my 20th year of teaching, my fifth wonderful year here at this district. Love being here, love the kids. When I came here, I've always taught environmental science, and I've been passionate about it, and I had a total of two semester-long classes. And next, going into next year, we have to have another teacher teach that class, because we have quintupled, is that the word? Five times more enrollment than we did five years ago. And with the popularity of that class and the subject matter in that class, and we really focus on three major things, environment, society, and economics, and how there has to be a balance there. I think you people know that as well as anybody does. There has to be a balance. If people can see that in person, in the places these are happening, rather than open a book and talk about the tropical rainforest, actually see that in person, see the fact that some of the rainforest is being destroyed so that they can put banana plantations in there and things like that. We see ecological things occurring where we need biodiversity, and how the sea turtles are laying their eggs, and what we can do to protect that, but still allow people to go on their business and make their money and live their lives. So I always consider environmental science kind of the all-star class, mostly because I love it, but also because it includes so many other things. It includes physics, it includes chemistry, it includes earth and space science, it includes biology, of course. So that's where all these things come together, and I think that's why the kids are so excited about it at school, is because, you know, wherever their interest lies, it kind of is that melting pot, and this is the opportunity that's going to allow them to see it on a large scale. I always like to have three components of what kids do, environmental service, education, and recreation, and I think that this trip would take care of, for sure, the education and recreation part of it, and I really think it feeds back into our community as far as that service component goes, because if you see these things on a large scale and how they impact other people's communities, now you bring it back to your own and you make a difference in your own community. So I know that we've sent out the itinerary, and if you got a chance to look at it, great. If not, I'd be happy to answer any questions. I more so wanted to give you the why. I think this is a good idea to take a trip with these kids, rather than go through the specifics of the trip itself. So it's a nine-day trip, and it's going to be in June of 2019 is the proposed date. It's through a company called EF, Education First. They've been in business for 50 years, and I asked that lady every question I can imagine that I'm sure that you guys would ask as well, so if you have any clarifications needed, I can definitely speak to that. I'll leave it at that. Any questions at all? Janet?
I think it's a fabulous trip, and congratulations on taking that trip. I'm sure you have checked, talked about travel advisories, and I just hope you'll keep up on that, and I see that it's a level-one travel advisory with normal precautions, and just that San Jose has a lot of crime in the area, and I don't think you're going on that side of San Jose, but just to keep abreast of that.
Yeah, you know, we're under our normal advisory. Yeah, there's that one to four scale. If that company ever got to a three, they would definitely restructure or reschedule our trips. So they're very flexible about that. They're very in tune to the safety part of it. Just to put your mind at ease, there is a EF office in Costa Rica, so there are people who work for the same company where we're going to travel. That's kind of one of their central locations where they kind of branch out from. So if we had any issues where we need to call in the backups, we definitely have their company's employees down there as well while we're down.
What about, what do they do about the snakes?
I can handle the snakes, no problem. I had one in school today, right? That's what I heard. That's another adventure. Sorry, Linda.
Also, I know, I've been to Costa Rica, and they're not really as bilingual as most other countries, so is there a language element to this trip also?
Yes, absolutely. Now, I'm not going to try to put your mind at ease by telling you this, but I do have a minor in Spanish from my first degree.
From an education standpoint, are you emphasizing the language aspect of this also?
We're not really pushing the language aspect, but I know that there were some kids who were interested in looking at possibly going on a Spain trip, who might consider going to Costa Rica, so that element is still there. Our guide is bilingual, so our guide will meet us at the airport, and will be there for 24/7 for the entire nine days that we're there, and that person will kind of be the go-between, but we also have people who are like experts in whatever city and site that we're seeing, who are also bilingual. So could we delve into it? Yeah, for sure. Would that be the major focus of it? I would say not particularly, but, you know, you know how it is, you go on an adventure. We just went canoeing today and yesterday, and the kids, you know, they find other things to learn that they're not expecting, and those are kind of sometimes the neat things, so.
Can I just add that through some deliberate conversation with staff at my school, and all the staff who's interested in experiences like this for their students, I know that we've started to have just beginning conversations around, like, is there synergy not for this trip this summer? But if this becomes a tradition at all, or becomes something like, why can't we have interdisciplinary, international trips that serve more than one purpose, to create a wider range? And again, like, there's lots of things that can be done through things like this, and I know between world language and science, for example, like, that's an opportunity, typically world language goes to Spain, and that's where they go. But, you know, just in those small conversations, high school library one day, it's like, oh, like, yeah, we'd be open to Latin America, and why couldn't we do that? It's just different than we've always done, so it's definitely something I think we need to explore to be more intentional and deliberate in finding things that mesh, and then, again, serving a wider range of kids to get experiences that are diverse.
I like the idea.
When I was there, I had to kind of remember some of these words to kind of, because they do not speak.
Donde esta el baño? You're good.
Yeah, okay.
I've heard Pat on the morning announcements. Occasionally, he'll drop in with a little bit of Spanish during March Madness, and his accent was really good. As a guy who did not proceed past the second semester in college, he impressed me, so whatever that's worth.
How did you settle in on Costa Rica? We wanted to find something that related to class and had a lot of adventure component, to be honest with you. We wanted that hook at least the first time we took it, so we are learning about the tropical rainforest and the diversity and the importance of maintaining that so we can produce medicines from mimicking nature, da-da-da-da-da, so that educational component. But then we get to go ziplining, you know? So you have the ziplining, you got the snorkeling, whitewater rafting, we get to hike to the top of a volcano. So those, the combo between education and the adventure part of it, we thought at least the first time around, to get the kids really hooked. They always get hooked on the adventure, but then, gosh darn it, they learn stuff there too, you know? It's beautiful.
Costa Rica really pushes ecotourism. That's their big thing.
Yep. Well, that's the other thing, too, I'm not worried about. Here, kids, here's a bunch of machetes, let's go through the forest. You know, there's going to be paths, and it's going to be more touristy, but yeah, I get it.
It's Costa Rica. Zip-riding, ziplining will not be the same as ziplining here. I have done ziplining there, and it's not the same thing. It's safe, though. You came back alive.
I'm excited now.
So I'm looking for a motion to approve the Franklin High School Science Department's Costa Rica trip for 2019. Do I hear that motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Gamble. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Nielsen. Any other discussion?
I did have one other element of discussion. I'm not sure if I should wait till after the other trip, but I see the cost of these trips, and I wonder if there's ever, is there any concern regarding how it might, the cost might exclude kids, you know, being able to access this kind of a experience?
I have two kids, and they're not going to go, so I'm living with it.
I'm wondering if you consider a lower price point, if, you know, if we really want to reach kids.
I've shopped around, and it's just one of those things where, you know, you want the experience, and you want the cheapest price, and we kind of got, you know, I think a really reasonable price for what we're getting out of it.
Mike, the question's more, can we go other places, closer places?
So if we were to do this trip every three years, let's say, we could have an off-year, Costa Rica year, Boundary Waters year, off-year, Costa Rica year, boundary, you know, just like a, more of a rotating thing with something that kids in their four years would be able to afford more, but would give them another view of the same type of ecological experience, I guess you'd say. So Boundary Waters is incredibly reasonable, and it's a great trip. I've always kind of threw that one around, but I'll be back for that one to tell you all about it.
And I think to speak to your question, Linda, the piece of, I don't know if I've arrived at, or as a school, we've wrestled with the, you know, what do we do to make these more inclusive when it comes to the price point, because none of them are cheap, right? And because their extensions of the class aren't required, and they happen outside of the school year, they're also not required. So that all being said, I know we don't have a solution for that piece, but it's definitely a challenge, I think, because these tend to be typical, and how do we create a community wherein we provide more opportunities? And to that point, I think with some more surety, I hope that, and I know that, especially in the music case, you know, like, there's this idea of giving people enough, you know, hopefully notice of a big picture, where then we can create more fundraising things that hopefully can offset some of that cost for families. And it's not ideal, and it does raise some great questions, but at the same time, I want to support the opportunity, you know, as it stands right now and as it exists.
And I know opposed to this trip, but I'm just saying, I think we need to kind of, it's starting to, I really see these adventures like.
Appreciate your thoroughness, absolutely.
I'm looking for the next, you know, trip to be to the moon, it's, you know, come our way, so I just.
So we got to take that one off the list?
We did. We are going back, I've heard. I've heard that, so.
All right.
Any other discussion? Hearing not all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Have a good time on your trip.
Thanks so much. We'll get, we'll bring you lots of pictures, I promise.
That'd be nice.
You know, Japanese always has a virtual website that they, every day you can kind of see what's going on, just saying.
I like that idea.
Do you have Wi-Fi down there? Are you? I think so.
Interdisciplinary, get the guys to help you sort of.
No, wait, I like the document, so it'll be well documented, I promise you.
And dovetailing with that, the authentic experiences that music affords as well, we're so grateful that students get to perform music hands-on. It's all based on these hands-on experiences daily. The past four years since the new addition to the high school and the Saber Center have opened, our entire high school music department has really thrived and grown, band, choir, and orchestra. So our four different standard areas within music are to perform, to create, to respond to music, and to connect, especially through culture. So our itinerary or proposal speaks to some of those as well, but especially the connect piece, connecting with history, connecting with culture, immersing ourselves in areas where composers like Vivaldi, Ruspihi, and others lived and performed. That is such a rich cultural opportunity for students, truly once in a lifetime, especially with their friends and being able to perform authentically while there. Back in 2016, we traveled to Ireland to perform on our first international trip at the high school, and that was a transformational experience for students. We had a group of 65 students and parents attend that trip. It was a 10-day tour, and the rich experiences that we had there, the cuisine, although Irish cuisine compared to Italian, I don't know, but it, all of the hands-on immersive experiences that they had were incredible. So speaking to Mr. Volo's point, we, about the rotating or the different experiences offered to students throughout their time in the high school, we brought to him earlier this year a proposal for a four-year rotation. So one year, what we did this past year was a one-day trip experience, and that was to Chicago to see the Chicago Symphony, to go see Blue Man Group, and opportunities there in a more local, cost-effective place. Years two and three would be domestic travel, possibly for the entire department, or with select groups like the wind ensemble, jazz ensemble, and show choir, and then one of the years, and therefore, would be an international trip opportunity. So if that rotation is approved and we're able to move forward with that, we wanted to offer students each of those price points and opportunities at some point throughout their high school career. We were drawn to Italy for a number of reasons, mainly because of the music that we perform at the high school and the composers with which we work. We were also considering Austria, Vienna as another option for Mozart and Beethoven, so perhaps that's down the road. We want this to be relevant, that students perform this music and they're able to go to places in which this took place. So it's, we're looking at an eight-day tour in June of 2019. It would not overlap with the Costa Rica tour. It would be open to all band, choir, and orchestra students at the high school. Last year, or when we went to Ireland, we also had 20 chaperones join us, so it's open to families as well. And that opportunity in Ireland, it really brought our entire department closer together. It was a community event as well, and we've seen those bonds carry on and strengthen our programs. We see it in our day-to-day work as well. So students would have the chance to go to Venice, Pisa, Rome, and even perform at St. Peter's Basilica, just incredible, incredible opportunities. There would be opportunities to see visual art, walking tours, taste the food there as well, and then obviously perform. That's our main focus of the trip. So we have various price points based on the number of students that we hope to attract. We work very closely with United Music Parents, or UMPs, the parent organization at the high school, and they offer a lot of fundraising opportunities for students as well. So this is an optional trip, all fundraising is optional as well, but we think this would be really rewarding for students.
Well, I'm happy to see you offer the fundraising, and I guess with a large group that, and having UMPs, that really makes it possible, so that's great. And your travel advisory is level-two with terrorism and all the places you go, so that's...
And back in 2016, when we traveled to Ireland, that was right around the time of the Belgium attack, for example. So we're, we always stay in close communication with the district and do whatever the district advises, but we keep, obviously, close watch on that as well. Bob Rogers Travel, the company with which we work, they work specifically with music performance groups, and they're very used to this. They send student groups all over the world all year, and they're very professional. We've done, I think, eight trips with them, so we look forward to collaborating with the district and them on that.
There were some friends of ours that had, that were going that same year, that the kids went to Ireland, they were going to, it might even have been Belgium, that, and I want to say it was like Greenfield or something like that, and they did have the plug pulled on that. They did not go. So what happens in a situation like that? I mean, we have the insurance with this, or I thought, I wasn't sure if it's this trip or the Costa Rica trip, or you could get optional insurance, but what are we doing from like a district standpoint?
We crossed that bridge, and we considered those options back in 2016 as well. I think New Berlin had to cancel their trip too, back in 2016. Students have the individual opportunity to purchase insurance, and we have, there's group insurance as well, but I think back in 2016, when we were considering that, there would be a non-refundable portion. The company could refund up to a certain point, but I don't think they could refund airfare, for example. So if students purchase the insurance on their own, and we would highly encourage that of students, they could get more back if that were the case.
Just to clarify, in Costa Rica, the insurance is included in the cost that we recorded, so everybody has it, but there's a similar.
So your travel agency includes insurance in the package?
Correct.
But the ones you're using does not, and that's why individually they should get it. You're recommending.
Yeah.
Okay. You just thought the cost was too prohibitive to add? I mean, it's already an expensive trip, but...
Right, and then they could customize it too, especially if a family is going, they could differentiate it that way. But I believe that, I should look before I quote, I believe it's $99 for the individual insurance, which in the grand scope of things, isn't too much.
Yeah, very much so. It's a pretty cool destination. Yeah, very much so. It's a pretty cool destination.
So looking for a motion to approve the Franklin High School Music Department's Italy Performance Tour for 2019. Do I hear that motion?
Some of it.
Motion by Mr. Nielsen, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Lewis. Any discussion? Hearing not all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Have a good trip.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Mr. Writer, I just want to thank the board for your continued support of these trips, and then thank our teachers as well for bringing these creative opportunities forward, so thank you.
Yep, thanks much.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Item 9B is the Communications Audit Report. Mrs. Dellehausen.
Good evening. As Doreen gets set up here, I just want to take a minute and kind of reflect back a bit as, I'm excited here tonight to present to you the findings of the Communication Audit and the subsequent action plan that follows. The word audit in itself kind of raises our ire a little bit. It throws up some self-preservation walls. It's a daunting word, it's kind of a scary word, and in essence of improvement, it really allows us to reflect back and gather in critical feedback so that we can develop a plan that has input from our many stakeholders. Doreen likes to use a quote that I deeply appreciate from Albert Einstein, and that's the, "If I have an hour to work on a problem, I'm going to spend 55 minutes figuring out the root cause of the problem and five minutes really on the solution of the problem." And when we look at communication, it isn't the role of one person or two people in an organization, it's really a shared ownership of all. And I have to give Mrs. Sapursky credit, we really didn't ask her to say what she said, we didn't prod her prior to the meeting, but she did such a nice job of eloquently leading in for us as a customer of our district where we can improve in some of the areas of sharing that information and how we deliver it to the many stakeholders and customers that we have. So thank you for that. I'm going to turn it over to Doreen and let her really dive into what she did with listening to those many factions within our organization, gathering in the data, and then really developing for us based upon that data where our actionable work is, especially in the current world order where communication has become complex, ever-changing, and critical in order for us to be successful. So with that, I'll turn it over to Doreen.
Thank you, and thank you for everybody who participated in the work of the last several months. I do want to congratulate or thank sincerely everybody who came willingly to all the meetings, they came fully prepared to the interviews, you had fully represented focus groups, we had amazing results submitted, lots and lots and lots of comments submitted. People took their time to provide this feedback. So for that purpose, then, you are able to pull together the information and feel, I feel very confident in the information we pulled. I feel as if we had good representation, and when people came to their interviews or to their focus groups or whatever venue it was that we met, the surveys, everybody wanted to get in there and give it their best, so I think that's great. I also think that the, just a few background comments to sort of frame how I work and how the world of communication has changed so very much. I don't think anyone in this room would dispute that communication is a complex issue now, because we have so many channels of communication. We have digital communication, and within digital you have electronic, email, newsletters, websites, social media. You have still channels of print communication. Some people rely on print, so, and then there's everything in between. We can go out and search for information. We don't have to really ask anybody for information. If we really want to find it, we'll find it. And here's the thing, if the information isn't there, people will fill it in with the information they can find. So it's, when Valley just said it's complex, it really is, and it does require the entire district to work on it. And that is something we came together, I believe, a week ago, and I was able to present for the first time the audit report and the recommended communication plan to the principals and your directors in a formal setting. But prior to that, Valley and I had been meeting, we'd been asking questions, Judy had been asking questions of me, I would present something, they would ask me more. So it's been an ongoing deliberative process for about, well, I started in December and it's May, but the audit was concluded in March, and since March, we've been working on writing the plan. Now, what is the plan? So the plan is a set of recommendations that I made for the Franklin Public Schools, and I think of it this way, there's a foundation of what we know is best practice in communication work. I've dedicated my life to this work, and there is lots and lots of good work out there that we know is effective. The baseline of your audit results are against the National School Public Relations Standards of Practice, and that is considered, you know, in our world, that's considered in schools, the benchmark. So everything I looked at, I looked at against that rubric of practice. And from there, I thought about the information I asked Judy, I asked Valley, other people, I thought about what's right for Franklin. And that compilation then becomes your plan. What you receive or will receive, I'm not sure, is a audit report, a plan, a very detailed plan that I've written all over since we've met a couple times, a detailed plan, and then an executive summary of both the plan and the audit. So there's four documents I've provided. I highly recommend that we in turn thank all the people who participated. They're going to want to know what came out of this. I'm not sure how many people are going to want to, who are going to want the detail, but I think it's very important that we respond to everybody who participated in some way. So those executive summaries are both for that and for an easier way to digest the information. So generally, the Communication Audit, oh, I just want to really quickly, we had 1043 parent responses, and I, and out of that, we had a lot of comments, and I want to assure everybody who's listening or who participated that I read each and every comment. I themed those comments and I quantified those comments, so their voices were heard. We had 283 staff responses, seven focus groups, parents, staff, one with the community, one with you, and we had 12 interviews, which was one-on-one, or two-on-one, or three-on-one, like your high school administrative team came together, but maybe an elementary principal came alone. So I did 12 interviews, and then I reviewed all of your existing materials. Not all of them, you can't possibly do all, but. Generally, we were looking for these criteria. Do your stakeholders feel informed? Is your communication timely? Is student performance communicated clearly, both at a district, school, and individual level? That's a very important criteria in today's world. Is your finance communication clear? Do you engage the district stakeholders using what they, how they prefer to be communicated with? So if we're looking at the community at large, do we communicate in a way that they can easily access the information? If we're communicating with a teacher to a parent, are we doing a great job? That communication. Are we using the right channels for the job? So that's what we looked at. Highlights of the data review, overall, your Franklin parents are very satisfied. As a matter of fact, I remember one of the focus groups, they said, "Now, we don't want anything in here to be interpreted as if we want our teachers to do more work." They're doing a really great job, however, they are, and there was very consistent reporting, that they do want that quality data, that quality information about their individual student. And I think any parent could understand that we want to know how our kid is doing in school. So that'll be talked about a little bit later. The sheer number of comments and the consistency in the surveys, the comments, the focus groups, and the interviews was really pretty astounding. It was pretty consistent, and everywhere I heard pretty much the same message, again, gave me confidence in what I'm recommending. Of particular interest to parents, their students' progress. It's a very important point. And, and I think your earlier parent who sat here said she's going to have kids in three different schools, right? And I heard one parent explain to me how difficult it is, right, when you have different kids doing different things. So looking for consistency in how they learn about their students' progress. And of particular interest to your staff is being deliberately as a leadership team, as a board, thinking about what input do we need to make this decision at this time? And I'm not saying every decision, and I'm not, you know, please don't overgeneralize, but when you need input, how do we ask staff to participate in that? And then, a little bit deeper in that, what are, what are ways that we can avoid unintended consequences when we implement a decision? What are the kinds of questions we can start becoming, forming a habit? Really, communication is a support structure for improvement, and part of communication is listening. So how do we do a better job actively listening to our stakeholders? That's a question that came out clearly to me in the survey. And as I said, there was remarkable consistency in the comments, so I was, I was pleased with that. So when we ask, I said earlier, there's some, we really, really, we really want to meet people where they're at, right? We want to know how to communicate to them in a way that they can access. We want it to be user-friendly. That's what communication needs to be. And I just want to comment real quickly on what does it mean when information is user-friendly? It means there's an emotion tied to that. So imagine a time when you've gone online and you've tried to research something that you're very interested in, let's gardening season. So you want, you go to a website and you try to buy bulbs for planting, right, and it takes you 10 minutes to find the one product that you want to buy on that website, and pretty soon, you're frustrated and you leave that website. And the problem there is not that the information isn't there, it's not there in a way that you can access it. And user-friendly means, we want to be user-friendly in our information so people can find it in the formats that they can best use it. User experiences are really an emotion rather than experience. So what we want to do is know where stakeholders get information, want information, what kind of information do they want, and provide it to them in an easy way. So we asked about that, and they still prefer, the parents were very, very complimentary of your schools and the building bulletins that they provide on a weekly basis. The principals apparently do a really great job on that, and staff, the principals were given a lot of credit for keeping staff informed on things like logistics and things they need to know, if there were going to be a substitute in the meeting, if there was a meeting coming up. That's really important to internal communication. People need to know how to do their job, right? So principals get a lot of kudos for both of those responses. They do like, parents do really want to know about the activities that their kids can be involved in, they're really concerned about that, and so we have to make sure that however we communicate that, it's easy for all parents to engage and help their students be engaged with activities. When we asked about social media, not, not, not an unusual finding, Facebook was the preference of parents and staff, but an unusual finding, and maybe not to, not to me, but I'm just saying this out loud, there's a couple things about social media. One, parents did not view that as the source for the information about their student, right? That's not where they go to find out how to get involved in something. They want that to be directly from their teachers, their school. But when asked, how should we better engage with the community, there should be a more structured social media strategy to showcase and tell the story of the Franklin Schools to the people who are not currently having kids in your schools. So that calls out in the action plan, something I say is develop a social media strategy, right? Right channel, right audience, right message. So I put that out there in the plan. Qualitatively, the comments in the focus groups, I, there were 382 parent comments about how do they access information. They truly prefer email from their teacher or, you know, that, again, that direct contact, send it to me an email, pick up the phone, get me the information I need about my kid in a very personal level. And from the, from the school, that building bulletin and that electronic communication is flowing well. 133 staff comments, and this is very common, I was on a webinar today about internal communication. Email is what we all use, every one of us, over, perhaps overuse email, and there is that feeling of information overload that it causes, right? We can't prioritize, we don't, we miss things. They want the email, the survey says that's how you communicate with me, I got that, but there's no way to prioritize it, I apologize for that. So very important that we think about that. Why is that? So how can we create a system, and communication really is a system, right? How can we create a system, we talked a lot about this, where we can provide easy access to the information that staff need to do their job? I talked later in the plan about an internet. Look, businesses, private, use internet everywhere, right? Managing that is again another, you know, process, but it is, it is something we don't have here, so it's something in the plan. So far, so good? So now I just really quickly need to go over the data. I don't want to drown you in it, you do have the full report of the audit, but again, here's, here's, we're doing a pretty good job keeping parents informed. We want to make sure that we're keeping staff informed, and I do believe that a little bit of what you're seeing at the bottom there with the Board of Education, I'd ask you not to perseverate on it, I'd ask you to think about it this way. A parent or a staff member is most concerned with those things that are in their immediate world, right? So their daily classroom activities. Then they're concerned about their school, right, where they function. Then they're concerned about what's happening at a district or a committee level, and then they get, you know, into the Board of Ed, the higher level of decision. That would be an expected result, that the farther you get away from their core work, the less satisfied they feel, because it's just the nature of our, it's, I see this everywhere. That doesn't mean we should ignore it, however, I think we had a parent testimony here, this is an important part of your plan, let's get the good word out, let's get the information out about the Board of Ed decisions, the overall operation of the school district, financial information, but use those channels that we have established and use a content strategy to tell your story. So not that unusual in the big picture. Qualitative, how well-informed do they feel? I do think there's a little bit more research we need to do on the community. We did have one community information meeting, and I heard a lot from, you know, their preferences. The Franklin Find is a new internal newsletter, very much appreciated, I'm going to say this a lot, it always needs that content strategy, you want to use it for what it's intended for. It is perceived, it isn't perceived that proactive communication is necessarily something everybody is working on, right? And when I say proactive, it goes back to that being deliberate. How can communication help us improve this district? So let's just say, I'm looking at the gentleman over here, they have a decision coming down the pipe, and I suggested this at the principals' meeting. End every meeting with three questions. Who needs to know? What do we need to know? And how are we going to communicate about this? You know, really building in those simple systems, pieces, that help you be more proactive. And then seek input from staff to avoid any unintended consequences of decisions. Round the loop. Feedback is not just sending, I mean, communication is not just sending, it's always listening and pulling in, back in, what did we communicate and what did you understand? So building in those listening processes. 494 parent survey comments on how you could improve. Of those, 146 related to improve my communication about my kid's progress in some way, shape, or form. So like I said, I'd like everyone to know, we did read them, I did theme them. How timely is your communication? Here's where we start seeing just a little bit, not bad, but we just want to make sure that our timeliness of our district communication, and we want to be the one that tells the story. We want to be the one out there making sure that we've not left a gap in communication, right? How well do we keep our stakeholders informed? On logistics, we're doing a pretty great job. On opportunities, parents are saying, just keep me informed about those opportunities, you heard about two tonight, how important that is to a child's experience, right? So they want to know, they want to be able to help their kids in school. And then general issues affecting the entire school district, that's where we're looking at the content strategy. How can we get better at that? How can we, how can we provide that more seamlessly? And then I go into recommendations, which were also in the communication plan, and for sake of time, you know, you definitely can look at all of my recommendations in the audit report itself, it's towards the back, but really, the first one, we've already done. The second one, we really want to talk about building that vision, that this is a shared responsibility of everybody in the district, that what does good communication look like to you here? What does it look like if we said we have transparent communication, we have good, risk-free communication? What does that mean here? So talking about that as a group, so we have the same foundation for our work, taking a systems view of change when you're implementing change, and incorporating communication as part of that change, deliberately saying, how do we communicate about this? To whom? And who do we need to ask? And who do we need to ask about this? And when? Articulating that the district has many key assets, and you have a very high and positive reputation, as indicated by your open enrollment data, as well as just, you know, some other general feedback that I received. So how do you keep telling that positive story about Franklin using that content strategy? And then overall, improving parent communication that's always going to be on your plan and improving your community connections, that is always going to be on your plan. And I think those last three are always going to be on your plan, as well as improving staff or focusing on staff communication. So now I'm going to really quickly go into, it's, I don't know how I have mine. What we did in the plan, and I'll, I don't have time, nor do you want me to spend time reading to you. But I want to talk a little bit about what we put in the plan, so that again, it's shared vision by everybody, right? So the plan repeats the recommendations. It's in, in the first section. Then we wrote, and it's up for discussion amongst the leadership team, sort of a guiding vision for what communication will mean and look like here. I overviewed the data. And then we get into detailed, and this is really for the practitioner, right? This is for the people who do the work boots on the ground. This is an action plan, and it's very detailed with timelines and metrics. I don't, I really don't expect that, you know, a board has to read this document, but you have it. This is the practitioner's work plan, right? But what's on here, and I think we should, you know, just give you some highlights. We have three areas of, major areas of focus, which are internal communication. And when I say internal, that's staff, and that's all staff members. Anybody who gets a paycheck from Franklin Public Schools, so that we're very inclusive. External communication, that's parents. There's two, there's many subgroups in external communication. You can't do everything, right? But we eventually will do everything. And then external communication at large. So we have three goals in your communication plan. And under those three goals, we have some strategies. We want to, in the first column, internal, reduce that feeling of information overload. Try to come up with some district ways that we can reduce those feelings. In the second goal, we really want to, oh, I'm sorry, I'm going to go back to the first column. Strategy one, looking at an intranet site. What would it take? What are some options to build a place where you can create a hub for staff? So they always know where to go for information. Then in strategy two, we're talking about continue a lot of your ongoing activities. The district leadership team has started this year onsite face-to-face meetings. Very well-received, and it should be continued. Continue using your staff engagement results. And if you give those staff engagement surveys, use them for improvement. People take a survey, we use them to improve. We, we talked a little bit about this, training for leadership communication in, in today's information world, right? What is, what, what are we modeling here? So that really goes back to the proactive, system-wide. What does that look like in action? At every late, at every level, because we have customers in public schools, right? We are, we are islands. We have customers, our parents and our community. So at every level, what does it look like to have a respectful? What does it mean to have a respectful conversation with any stakeholder? To get some common understanding around that and train for that. Create meaningful staff recognition program, keyword meaningful, so that people, the current literature about employee engagement has several components. I like to say there are four components. One is people know how to do their job. The second one is people know the vision and mission of the school district and know where their job fits in. The third one is people know where to get help for learning their jobs, so they can feel supported in the job. And the fourth one is they feel recognized for their contributions to doing the work that makes that organization move forward. So that is in the plan here, that staff engagement is critical in today's workplace. Continue the efforts that you've been making with the Franklin Find. And then this idea of listening, checking in on a regular basis. So that very last one in that first column, that monthly cross-representative valley is going to lead that. Staff retention interview, meaning what are we doing right? What can we improve in? How can we get better? So communication is not just stuff we produce, like a flyer and a brochure. It's really about doing things that stimulate that two-way communication between all stakeholders. So for parents, I'm suggesting investigating a consistent parent app, so that we create sort of that hub for parent communication. Deploy a consistent number of teacher classroom communication. I mean, that's not for me to determine, that's a leadership decision. But have a conversation, what does it look like if a parent has a third-grade student versus a sixth-grade student? And how parents know what those expectations are? How do they know what to expect in communication as they head up the line? That was a big discussion at the focus groups. And the, and I, I don't really know where this came from, but I heard it everywhere. Investigate a possible second opportunity for face-to-face parent communication. They use the term conferences, but I don't want to box in your thinking. It doesn't necessarily mean that, but there was a change apparently in the number of parent conferences at the elementary level, I believe. So they're saying, you know, we'd like this time to talk to our teachers. It's important to us. And that would be consistent with what we know about parents and the, and development. Is children are younger and do they get older? You know, you guys know that stuff. What's the right amount? But have that consistent approach. Everyone's on the same page. I talked later about, you know, how do parents get involved? How do we help them know how to connect with schools? Being proactive and deliberate about that. Determining your social media guidelines, response guidelines, and strategy. Not, you know, a consistent one across all schools. I didn't see total consistency there. I think you have to wrestle with that. And then I know you were working on your crisis communication protocols when I was doing the audit. I, we need to wrap back around to that and look at that, but always keeping that on the plate. It's always an important piece. And then looking at implementing an external newsletter and the strategy, e-newsletter, about district and school board, sort of four times a year. You know, I don't know what that looks like yet, but that idea that I was expressed earlier is how can we keep our parents informed of what happens here and at the district level? That was something I, I saw. And then finally, looking at a, a kind of a clarifying the district's identity, making sure you're talking about those things that make you great on a regular basis. And, and that's in column three. And finally, those, that stronger relationships with external stakeholders. Just, I didn't have a lot of interaction with your external stakeholders, but I do know you have a new program at the high school with your community enhancement coordinator. You know, what is it, again, that we can pull together? Not add necessarily, but pull together to make a more consistent approach to your communications. I am going to conclude with that. My time is up. But we did want to ask you two questions before, before we, oh, sorry, I do want to make these. You're facing the same complexity in communication that every other organization, private and public, faces, small and large. It, it really is just a matter of scale, because communication is so complex in today's world. We discussed the results and the plan with your leadership team. We asked them for ideas back, and they were receptive, I would say generally. The parent communication, I really think it's important to wrestle with this. In today's society, it is an expectation that there is good communication because of the world we live in. This is just the way the world works today, so we have to wrestle with that. And the response rate, I think, was clearly an indication that there is interest. Oh, so many people responded. Community engagement is important to build relationships, that, that's a critical piece. And I have recommended in the plan, and we'll work to whatever level Valley needs help me explaining those, tools to really modernize how you approach this. You know, using webinars, using screencasts, replacing face-to-face with, you know, the intranet. If there could be a hub where everyone gets the same video about insurance, I don't know. You know, creating that sort of, using the tools that are out there for communication to simplify and streamline, so you can be more efficient on a regular basis. So is there anything that needs further classification? Or is there anything you feel we didn't consider?
I just have one. I, I didn't get to look at all of it, not all the documents were readily available. But one thing I noticed on the evaluation, or at least the focus in the plan on the internet, is that it seems to be on prospective employees and prospective parents. And I, I didn't see anything on, you know, I live in a community, and I, I'm looking for stuff about the district on the website. And I didn't, I didn't see any focus in the strategies to address maybe that information need. Because as a community member, I would think I'd go to the website. Well, when's the play? You know, how do I find when the play is?
Right, so a website as a communication tool can serve two audiences well. And that's the truth of it. And so
And not one of them, I guess?
So we could, we could decide on what your strategy is. But the, there is a third one, and that's sort of the bigger picture, right? So it has to have some basic components. Has to have a calendar that's up to date. Has to have an easy navigatable menu. It has to address, contact us, logistics, things like that. But then beyond that, when we're talking about storytelling and what's on your front page, and how do you, how do you, how do you present the image of the district on the website? That's, that's what I'm referring to. So we can have a deeper conversation as you look at your website, but truly, a website has to have some basic components and then a presentation of information. And I think they both work together. So my recommendation may not be as clear, and I could rewrite it, but that's
Well, I'm going to piggyback off Linda, because we both are focusing on the same thing. Because on page 23 of the communications plan, I picked up on the same thing that, that you just brought up, and it's number two there. It says, focus website content strategy on two primary audiences, prospective employees and staff, and prospective parents. The third audience is community at large. So you're talking about prospective employees and prospective parents, and the third audience is the community at large. Well, I, I don't agree with that, because our community at large, to, to us, to a board, is the most important people we need to communicate with, and you're putting them last.
No, I'm not putting them last, but I, I can certainly I, I, I hear what you're saying, and we can readjust that. That's why we're here. Again, there's, we should, we can spell out a navigation. There has to be primary, about five, I don't have a tip on my tongue. But there's about five, primary, financial information, logistics, about us, you know, how to get in contact with people, and then presentation of information.
I mean, I, I see why, of course, you want to have prospective employees be able to navigate, of course. And, and our staff, but, you know, I, I've looked at websites, and sometimes it's much easier for staff to look at a website than the outside. And sometimes you need to sit as an outside person and just look at this website and say, geez, this is horrible. It's horrible to navigate this website as an outside person. Where inside, you just know where to go. And I just don't think they should be third.
That's okay, we can change that.
And I'm not just talking about the order. I mean, they need to be thought of.
I think from parents who are looking for information, as you had stated, about their student, their, their child, yeah, that wouldn't be the place that they would look for something like that, clearly. But the other part, the part that you didn't mention, one of the five, at least I didn't hear, maybe, was people are looking for what's going on. I think that's what Linda was, was referring to.
Calendar.
That's the biggest thing. If somebody's, if somebody's going to our website who either has kids in the district or maybe just a community member who likes to be tied to some of the activities that are going on, that's the biggest thing. You know, what are the activities, what's going on? Not maybe even so much, what are the inner workings of what's going on in a particular elementary school or something? But like, what are the activities that are going on at the elementary school?
I agree.
Are there any fundraising efforts, whatever else? So, and if there's changes to that calendar, or if something gets approved by one on one date, we have to make sure that those dates are consistent across the platform. So I think it's a, I think it's a powerful tool. And the communication for that, for that particular tool would be to people who are looking to see what's going on. Even like sports activities. You know, we had a bunch of stuff going at the high school tonight that a community member may not be looking to know that there's a track meet tonight, but a parent might want to go, hey, is there a JV anniversary? Well, what time is the JV, what time?
I'm driving by and see the lights on in the field. Hey, I wonder what's going on in the football field? How do I find out?
So I had some, I think we could definitely punch up.
Okay.
And you did have meetings with community members, just playing?
I just had one.
Oh, just one?
I do say, we probably did a little bit more work there.
Because I think when we were starting this, the whole communication, I think that was the, one of the biggest focuses, is how can we get our word out to the community? How can we communicate better with them on all different levels? And I think we've done a lot of great work here, but I almost hear more of how we've solved problems and things we're going to put in place about internal communications with, with staff and everything. The internet, that was, that was interesting.
So I think we have the two. We have the parents as a, as an audience for improvement, because it's a critical audience. And then we have the external communication, community at large. And on, in the plan itself, they, they really do have a lot for each group to take care of. And really interesting, you know, I talk in here about developing an external mailing list, like really thinking down, thinking about who are your key people in your community? You know, when we, when we talk about it, right? Like, who do we need to keep involved? Who, who do we need to reach out to? How can we, and really deliberately, I use that word a lot, deliberately thinking about that and making an effort to create a consistent communication tool directly to them. Because in today's world, website is pull. Okay, so if I'm interested enough and I go to a website, so they call that a pull technology. What we really have to get better at is push. Because people are too busy. You have to get in front of them with your message, so they can pay attention to it. And you can put yourself in that same situation. There's probably 10 different organizations that want your attention tonight in your email, right? So we have to really think about how do we push, not literally, not push them over, but how do we push your message in front? A website is pull.
Although I guess, I think of, you know, we're a public institution that we don't have to push so much. Everybody knows we're here. I think a pull would work very well. I don't think we need to push as much. People know where we are, and community members would find if there was a reliable, you know, consistent
Consistent, timely, yeah. It all has to work together, though.
Pull's good enough.
To, to your point, it all has to work together. It does, in order for not to have those gaps, right?
And, and the push is important. You know, we need to convey to our community that we're successful as a school district, because we rely on our community to be successful. It's to your point, Mr. Nielsen, that we need to get the word out to our citizens about the work that we're doing, so they continue to support us. So you have to find ways to push information out, that, you know, get in front of people.
Well, even like that keeping you informed, you know, that you've developed, that's wonderful. Very informative email that comes out with all these links and everything. Maybe even something along those lines, but email does get to be a little, you know, you know, right? It's kind of gloss over, but
We don't have every citizen's email address either, so
Correct.
You know, we have the opening doors with the city newsletter, which allows us a, a push, you know? But we have to think creatively about other ways to, to speak to our community, to let them know about the good work we're doing.
Let me ask you this, so how effective is self-serve? You know, I can sign up for the newsletter, as opposed to trying to get in front of everybody, but offer them an invitation to sign up for your
So that's how your website works together, right? So you can, first you have to develop the tool, like sign up for the newsletter. You have to have the newsletter developed, so they have something to sign up for. If it's electronic, because of SPAM laws, they have to sign up for it. We can't just put their names in there.
Right.
So we have to have that, let's just imagine with me, you have a community section of your website, and you have an electronic newsletter started, and right on that page it says, want to hear more from us? Sign up. Yes, we would definitely do that. That definitely is part of the whole process of implementing a, a, a strategy. So like I said, that's a practitioner's job to know all that, and, you know, I didn't get into every little, maybe it's not a little detail, but in my head, it's, it's part of the tactical piece of this work, is, is knowing, you do the e-newsletter, you develop the mailing list, you have a content strategy, you make sure you watch your open rates, you see who's not signed up, you call 'em up, you ask 'em if you can put 'em on there. I mean, it's very personalized. Today's world of communication is very labor-intensive, because you have to personalize it. It just is, because there's so much. And, and, and that's, I feel very confident in saying that, because I do this work, um,
oh, almost twenty-four seven.
And I, I guess if you look at that third lane, which is more of that community-focused lane of the one page, it isn't just one strategy. There's everything from annual reports and videos, to Dr. Miller holding community types of chats, to leadership being involved in the community, to really thinking of it from that stewardship standpoint, of how do we make sure that we have strategic approaches to reach our community? And to Dr. Miller's point, be sure that they are able to advocate for us. Because if they have a neighbor or someone that is our prospective parent, we want them to be able to advocate for us, and know where to find that information, and not just put it everywhere or nowhere at the same time.
Well, and we've had this conversation before, too, about getting more people involved, having more parents show up to board meetings, as we mentioned earlier. People are gonna get involved if they wanna get involved, but the other thing is, we're offering this on video, I think there's a lot more people that are seeing these or hearing these than we may know about, too. I still don't think the percentage is as high as we'd like it, but, you know, you can't force people to get involved in something, you know? So we can do everything we can to help get that information on all the different ways, but you're still only gonna have so many people that are gonna get involved.
That's right. And at different times.
Right, everyone's got their own reasons why they're looking for, that's why I really think of, like a powerful calendar tool or something that can be, there's so many things going on, I don't know how you could simplify it down, but something where people can find it real easy, and, because everyone's got their own reasons for going to the web, looking for stuff.
Well, you have the recommendations, and we can adjust them with your feedback. I mean, that, that's why we asked, so we want to do that, and, um-
One other follow-up, you mentioned there's four documents or products that you provided. Did we get all four? Because-
So there's the complete audit-
Got that one.
The complete plan.
Got that.
Then there's an executive summary of both.
See that. Although I see this paper got shared, but-
That's not the executive summary.
No.
That's, that's the executive summary of the communication plan.
Did we, did we get those? I don't know.
And there's a, that's the executive summary of the communication plan.
Was this just one piece of paper? Was it emailed, was it posted, was it?
It was emailed to you tonight.
There wasn't, I'd like to get a copy of that, too, there wasn't enough to go on.
Okay.
And then there's an executive summary of the communication audit, in that Google folder.
Right, right.
Make sure you have everything.
Oh, you can do that.
So what is your plan, um, after tonight, with the plan, as far as, Larry? Coming, did you get one, Larry? As far as coming back to the board at all, with, with this plan in the future? To update us on it, or, you know, you know, as time goes on?
So I can jump in. So, um, you know, the first step really is that we're, we're looking for a marketing and communications person. So, um, that's really the first step, is to, um, as we move forward with the plan, get, get the individual who would be responsible for deploying the plan employed to work with us. Um, and absolutely, that person would be responsible for bringing this plan back annually to the board, to discuss, you know, progress, what we're doing. So, it's, it's a working document, though, you have to kind of view it that way. It's operational, but, um, these goals will be important to improving our communication.
Can we just circle back on like six months, maybe, and just get an update as to where we are?
Absolutely. Oh, right, absolutely.
Sort of wait an whole year, that'd be good. I mean, we're not gonna tackle all of this stuff, but, and, and a month from now, then we're not gonna move the needle much in a month, but in six months, we can see where we are.
Right. And that would give the new employee an opportunity to kind of get their feet on the ground, and explain what has been done, and where we're going. So, absolutely can do that.
I would just like to, to say that I'm really pleased with the work. I think it was incredibly thorough. Thank you very much. You've spent a lot of time talking to me, a lot of time talking to Valley, and I'm very pleased with the outcome of this work.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. I also think this is something that, as, in between six months, this is something that involves personnel and community and governmental relations, as far as liaisons go. So if something comes up, that could be something that, well, your personnel on community and governmental relations, we could report back to the board if something major comes up. You could meet with us, and we can report before six months, or before a year, so.
Just one follow-up for you, Jim. So are there dollars in here that we're spending that I need to know about, or?
No, I, I read that there was very little effect on the budget in there. I was quite happy to see that.
Said that in there, very little.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Are, are you gonna stay there, Valley?
Well, I have my folder over there, so I'll try to get back.
Oh, this is yours. I'm, here I am trying to take this property right in front of you, in plain sight. Sorry. Thank you.
I'm so used to disconnecting.
Almost worked, huh?
Thank you, Doreen.
So mine says Doreen on it.
So nine C then, is the human resources report, twenty eighteen nineteen staffing update.
Correct, all right. So in your packet, um, you have the information that I've shared at this point. Obviously, uh, this is also a work in progress. Um, as you all know, this is our busiest time of the year, as we close one school year, start another school year, and in our current world, even think about the school year following as you see that beautiful building come into play. So there are a lot of balls in motion. There is constant change. It would be really great if every child showed up on our door, and they were here today, and we knew all of them, and we were settled, but, um, that's, that's a constantly moving variable as well. So as we looked, um, as I looked at the staffing and as a system, with principals and the directors, we look at the way in which we need to allocate our resources to best meet our student needs. Um, I've highlighted for you in those areas where there are staffing implications or changes that are deemed significant. At the elementary level, um, we are constantly monitoring those enrollment numbers to look at equity in our buildings, in grade levels, in accordance with policy around how we allocate resources for students in the core grade levels. There is a roll-up factor that always takes place, as one sixth grade leaves, moves to the next level, kindergarten enrollment is taking place. Significantly noted for you are just some changes in kindergarten roll-up to first grade, and then, uh, Southwood, or, excuse me, Countrydale's sixth grade. So what happened there, just for clarification with Kinder, is that was a late add. Enrollment numbers, of course, blossomed after the start of the school year. These are little kiddos, um, the most effective and efficient way, with the least disruption at that point in time, was not to break down class sizes and redeploy children to different kindergarten teachers as the school year was in motion, but to add a halftime teacher to really help with small group instruction, uh, in the literacy and math areas when possible. As that class rolls forward, it's now the natural time to make sure that FTE is materialized into another classroom section. At Countrydale, they currently staff sixth grade with two sections. The roll-up numbers from fifth to sixth require a third section in order to align the equity there, so that's really why you see that number. Uh, there are some changes in other buildings, in terms of grade level roll-forwards, but the overall net for you, as you see the elementary there, is on that spreadsheet. You also are able to see that music, um, change that we've talked about in prior board meetings. There's very little, um, variation in the middle school, uh, as we maintain stability there. Come nineteen twenty, you can expect to see that middle school change dramatically as, as we begin that process of sixth grade coming into the building and the exploratories that go in place as well. And then at the high school, um, what, what you see there is really the outcome of meeting our kids where their needs are. And in the fall, you heard about the expansion of courses in those areas, some moving from semester to year-long additional courses. Uh, you saw some of that come to life if you were at that breakfast with our business partners, and as a result, our children, our, our students are taking those courses. With that comes the staffing that follows. Um, I would also note that our high school enrollment is up next year, too, as you look at the eighth grade that moves in, and then the parochial numbers that follow as well. We will see an increase of students at the high school, between eighty to a hundred is what's expected, should those numbers materialize. So, correspondingly, you see the areas there that are allocated for additional FTE, um, in those student interest areas. And then lastly, is the, um, coaching for math, as we look at the way in which we can improve our instructional prac- practices that really meet students, and we've seen significant gains in literacy as we've deployed those literacy coaches. We hear from the principals and our staff, the need for that coaching, um, and the desire to have coaches support them as they deploy those most effective practices, so there is where the additional math coaching comes into play.
One question, um, so we have four point five math coach intervention, I'm not sure the SS stands for. How are they allocated across the, uh, the five schools? How are they deployed?
Yeah, so as you heard Ms. LA House and speak to what we did in a change in literacy two years ago, where we separated the role of interventionist and literacy coach, as we implemented a new curriculum, and saw the success of that model, as our elementary literacy scores have risen the past two years, um, and the feedback, as we've heard from teachers, as well as principals, on the effectiveness of that. We had state status quo with our math system specialists, is what the SS stands for, where they serve both dual liter- um, excuse me, coaching and intervention role. So we've copied the model that we went forward with two years ago in literacy, and at, we will have a math system specialist that will be devoted to coaching at grades K one, two, three, four, five, six, eight, and nine, twelve, and the intervention role will be separate, and we'll have three separate, um, halftime FTE for intervention in the areas of math, which would mirror what we're doing in literacy. That way, too, the coaches are content specialists at two grade levels, instead of currently, they serve dual role in the elementaries in intervention and math coaching for sixth grade, seventh grade levels currently. So it's more specialized, focused, um, practice and coaching, working with, um, a teacher team of probably thirteen at per-grade level thirteen to fourteen, so a caseload of twenty-six to twenty-eight across the district to build continuity of practice district-wide, regardless of the elementary school you attend.
Considering we have one psychologist in each of the elementary schools, and then you go to Forest Park Middle School, and we have one psychologist in the high school, and we have one psychologist, how, how is that enough? I, I know in the elementary, the psychologists handle, gifted and talented.
They do at all levels.
They do at all levels, so how is, how does that work out?
So, um, it really is a model looking at, first of all, one of student access to the mental health supports that they need. So, the district is committed to having somebody to provide real-time support to kids in each building. Um, in terms of the workload, it looks different at each level, because we have other people that share similar roles. So for example, at the middle school, we also have two school counselors who take on some aspects of that role, in addition to one school psych. We also find that at our elementary, that's the highest referral point for students who need, um, special education support. So they spend a far more time doing diagnostics. So it's kind of a balance of access and workload. And again, looking at the high school, sort of a similar pattern, where we have a school, you know, full-time school social worker in addition to our school psych, as well as two, four full-time, um, school counselors.
Are we spending enough time in middle and high school for, you know, on mental health with one psychologist, you know, for trauma and looking for things like that?
Right. So I think that when we look at, um, mental health, there are a lot of, um, different roles and people that are providing those services. So there is some overlap. There are some pieces that are unique roles for each pupil services personnel. Um, so for example, um, our school counselors do academic and career planning, and that's unique to their role. But in terms of providing student with, students with mental health supports, we have multiple people that are trained to provide those supports. So it could be a school social worker, um, a school psychologist, as well as a school counselor.
We have one school social worker?
We, the district has two full-time social workers. So we have one social worker right now, who is assigned primarily to the elementary programs, um, and one dedicated to the high school, and then sort of a shared responsibility right now to the middle school.
I might add that Ms. Preman is also working, um, on a grant, the mental health grant, to, to afford us more of an opportunity to, um, have services for our students outside of the school setting, to, to build those partnerships with our health providers in the community, because we can't provide all those services in school. We need to have those partnerships and, um, make those connections for our students to get that support, both in school and out of school.
Did I answer your question?
Yes.
Okay.
I guess I'd like a little clarification, because we've talked about Ben Franklin in the third grade.
Yeah.
And we said we were gonna do an evaluation, and we've added a, a part-time aide, and I assume that's what the evaluation came to, and now this says that we're monitoring for fourth grade, because we wanna see how that's, uh, playing out, to see where we have to go next year.
Yes, fair question. So, but I, I would like to just, there are actually five areas within the district across all the buildings that we're, we're monitoring and watching as those enrollment numbers creep. And again, I wish it were a perfect science, but we don't know who's coming, we don't necessarily know who's leaving, and at the same time, we, we want to be, um, effective in how we deploy and hire resources in. So it is, it is a constant weekly thing that I do, to look at the numbers in those sections, keep them on that watch list. With Ben Franklin, the intent is, at this point, to certainly continue that classroom aide into next school year, based upon some of the makeup of those classes, that particular class section. But in these other areas, too, that same review will be done from an equity standpoint. And again, where needed, Mr. Melzer and I are in constant contact of adding those resources when necessary, when we are at a point where those numbers are known.
Thank you.
As, as far as the music and the art in the elementaries, um, considering last year, this, this year, how art, you had the choice of sixty minutes and thirty minutes, and some, each school was different, how they chose to go about doing that. The administrator decided, worked with the teachers to decide how they were gonna do it. Have, has there been talk of how they're gonna do that next year? I mean, have some administrators decided to go to all sixty minutes? And how will they do it with music? Uh, I know it didn't work well for some teachers, and it, I think it depended on some of the teachers, they need support, I think, maybe, I don't know.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We've had a lot of conversation with our teaching staff around that, is having- We've had a lot of conversation with our teaching staff around that, is having made the switch this year, and this year was the first year of that change in allocation of time and looking at the needs of lower elementary compared to upper elementary and knowing sixth grade will be gone in a year. So we're looking at thirty, two thirty minutes a week sections for the lower elementaries and then a more concrete time at the upper elementary. And that would be consistent across the elementary building, so it wouldn't look different at Robinwood compared to Ben Franklin. That helps with consistency of unit planning and accomplishing the standards as well and keeping pace. So when teachers come together on professional development days, we have common alignment and calibration around standards and results of assessments.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Has this communicated with parents and?
Yeah, there was a, there was a communication that went out stating the structure, I believe, in March, when we made the decision to change to music.
And the principals have worked collaboratively to develop their schedules together for art, for music, and for FIAD so that we do have that level of consistency.
Are there any other questions or comments? Thank you.
Thank you.
Item ninety, the treasures report is available in the board docs library. And nine E, we had a forest park construction report, Ms. Milzer.
You'll notice that there's been a lot of progress on the building in the last month. All those wall panels have gone up, which has really helped to define what the building looks like and, and how large it is. There's a lot of work going on. There are over a hundred construction workers there every day now, doing all kinds of trades at this point. And the building is in different stages depending on which part of it you're looking at. The music area, which is down this way towards the current forest park, is the one that's farthest along. And there, they have brick on the backside that faces forest park, current forest park. And then they're almost done with the side that faces the ECC. They'll be putting in windows next week and then starting to drywall in there right after that. And then the brickwork will move around the east side of the building counterclockwise and then come all the way around. They expect to lay about three hundred and fifty thousand brick on the building, and they have about fifty thousand up already, and they're putting up about five thousand bricks a day. So it's a massive effort, and it's interesting to watch them do it. They're so good at it. It doesn't look like it's a big deal, but if you try and do it yourself and have it look like that when you're done, you realize it is a big deal. Let's see, they're installing the wall studs in many areas in there. All of the stairwells are in, all over the building. And next week, they'll be pouring the finished floor on the, the second floor. They had the original plank floor down there, and they'll pour a finish coat over that. And we won't see as much difference in the way the building looks over the next month because there's a lot going on inside, but they're making very good progress.
Are there any approvals we need anymore right now, or are they all done?
No, they're pretty much all done.
And we're on schedule? We're not ahead of schedule?
Not ahead of schedule. We've run into many, many snowstorms in April and things like that, but, that have held us back. But they, they've done a good job of then putting additional crews on, like they'll have two full masonry crews working on the brick to get that going and, and make it go quickly. So they've been very responsive that way.
When you bumped the moving date back to fall of nineteen, that gave, that gave you all kinds of buffer in there. So when do they think they're actually going to have it done?
Probably be done in February of next year. I'd say maybe halfway through February is what we're looking at now, maybe the end of January, but in, certainly in plenty of time for us. And in looking at our staffing, we'll have our custodians in there starting to work on putting our floor finishes down and all of that so that the, the building is absolutely ready to go.
Would you have that be available rec space in the interim between when it's done and?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yep. We'll start using really as much of it as we can, and the, the gym space is very valuable, and we'll start using that right away.
Do we have a time lapse camera going on this project to see them lay five thousand brick a day?
The camera wasn't working, the website wasn't up.
Oh, okay. They do have a, a camera that's looking all the time that I think they can time lapse, and they're, they're taking pictures from the exact same point over time. And then there's also the pictures on the website that, that we refresh every two weeks.
So if that's not working, that'll be a great time to make sure it is working because I'm sure people would love to see that.
Right.
Thought I'd throw that out there. Nice.
Are there any neighbor concerns right now, or is it pretty quiet?
Right now, no. The, we've had some concerns about just garbage that's blown over into their side, and they're looking at that constantly. They drive through to make sure that there's nothing over there. Early on, there were some concerns about the, the sounds of the heaters out there when we had to have them heating the concrete. But lately, there hasn't been too much. We've worked with the folks over in the condos about the positioning of the trees that are needed there and the sizes and so forth so that they're not, they don't have this building completely in their face to begin with. The vegetation will be much larger than we have to put in.
And is the water flowing where we expected? Certainly have wet make, correct?
Right. It's not, yeah, it's not operational yet to, to work by itself. They're controlling it with a pump system right now because there's no vegetation in the basin, and they don't want the dirt leaving with the water.
It was a concern with the condo, too, that they're, that the lake is being fed.
So they're, they're managing it. It, it builds up a little bit, and, and they pump some out so that it's the right amount, that it's not making the neighbors mad that it, there's too much water, or the condo association that they aren't getting enough water from it. But you can see the difference already. We've had some really torrential rains, and the yards down here are much drier than they used to be, like when we walked through them after a rain, they were just really bad. And they, they're much drier now that that's all been put in.
It's more being contained on site in a better way than it's already?
Right, right. It all goes into that pond in the corner, and there's really just, just the ditch line that continues down towards the houses, and that, we couldn't stop. You have to let the ditch flow.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Item ten, school board liaison reports. Ten A, board liaison reports. Do we have any reports?
Okay. I did meet with the teaching and learning group, Nick and Chris, before this meeting, and we talked about all the reports that will be coming and understand there'll be a schedule coming. And I also did attend a educational foundation meeting. Actually, it was a virtual meeting because they now have software where you can, you can sit in my office and attend the meeting. It's like time traveling. One minute you're there, next minute I'm at my office. So they finished up their strategic plan, and now they have their goals then in five areas, community, finance, recruitment and retention, governance, and communications, on what they're planning on doing going forward. It was really nice to see them at the breakfast on Tuesday because they do have an intern or interns are the right word, but they have, that they've worked with. So they also, I have a scholarship. I'm not sure who won the scholarship. I will be finding that soon, so that was, will be awarded. So they're, they're busy, and I think.
Did you want to mention their, the two grants? They were grants, right?
Yeah, I'm not remembering what they were, sorry.
Those were volleyball, I saw one for volleyball.
No, it was, it was the, the device for the student at Countrydale.
That was discussed briefly at the, the meeting. My understanding is that they kind of connected somebody to, to donate it. It wasn't a direct.
Well, it was with the Lions Club, correct? So it was a, a Braille device for a student.
Yeah, Braille note ticker.
Yeah, so they provided that for Countrydale for, for a student, and then also for the dance team, they gave a grant.
For uniforms.
And here's one for Team Snap for the Franklin High School volleyball team.
Oh, I did not see that one.
Yeah, that one just came in.
Okay.
So you can, yeah, so you can make requests. But I, it was good to see that they are, you know, they can, again, they can be a connection with community partners. I think that's a, a nice focus that they're, it's different than I've seen in the past. And they still have their events, but.
And they, they did attend the Business Alliance Breakfast, and the president, Vicky Cordan identified on her way out how pleased she was that we were growing our, our connection to the businesses because that helps the foundation as well. So things are moving in the right direction.
And she's the new president, so she's taken, they're able to generate, you know, interest and people stepping up and participating. It's all good.
I have community and governmental relations, just two things on celebrations. We have, again, the July fourth civic celebration will be in the parade again. I, I mentioned that last time, but just, it'll be ten thirty AM on Wednesday, July fourth, and Dr. Miller has offered a car this year. And if you're interested, I'll send out an email just to verify if you want to be in the parade. And we haven't had a sign up yet, correct, Megan? Not a sign, no information on that yet. That should be coming soon. And then the other one is, to put on your calendars, the National Night Out. Megan signed us up for a table on Monday, August sixth. It's from six to nine PM at the Franklin Public Library. So we will be there then, as we are every year.
When is it again, August?
August sixth, Monday. And that's. Six to nine. And that's, that's the night before the actual National Night Out. We always, Franklin does one ahead of time so that we can get some of the things that other cities get to, like the Flight for Life and things like that, so. Any other liaison reports? If not, then ten B, school visits, any school visits?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
All of them. I had a chance to visit all of the schools within the past two weeks, and it was very interesting. I mean, I saw individuals I didn't expect to see, like my, my nephew's wife came up and gave me a hug and things like that. And I saw my next door neighbor that I didn't even know worked for the school district, so it was interesting. The, I met with each principal, and I figured out I hadn't been in a principal's office for fifty-six years, and I'm not telling you why I was there fifty-six years ago. The thing that impressed me was just the quality of all principals. I mean, it was just amazing. Having, again, not been associated with schools other than with my kids, and thankfully, they didn't have issues where we met with principals and teachers frequently. But I was very impressed with the quality of the principals. I went into my HR mode, and I kind of interviewed each one of them, asked a little bit about themselves, then what their goals were and things like that. And one of the things that was fairly consistent with all of the principals, which, again, was very impressive, they all pointed to the continuous improvement process and talked a little bit about that. And they also mentioned the work that Nick and Chris are doing in the consistency in direction, which was very impressive, the fact that they were consistent and they were appreciative of the consistency in direction. So I give you guys some kudos there. As far as, then I also had the chance to meet with all the different departments, which again was very informational for me, to find out a little bit what goes on in a school district, very similar to a business, but different. So it was just a great experience, and I really enjoyed it.
Great, thank you. Anything else? All right, good, thank you. And then? Item eleven, I'm looking for a motion to enter into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State statute nineteen point eight five, sub one, sub C, to discuss employment, promotion, compensation, and performance evaluation data for the district administrator. Do I hear that motion?
So move.
Motion by Mrs. Witkowski, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Nielsen, is there any discussion? Harry Ng, can I have a roll call vote, please?
Yes. Mr. Lewis.
Aye.
Mr. Gamble.
Aye.
Mrs. Evans.
Aye.
Mr. Nielsen.
Aye.
Mrs. Witkowski.
Aye.
I say yes also.
Motion carries?
Six zero.
Six zero one absent. We are now in closed session at seven forty-five. We'll take a three-minute recess, anybody? We're back in open session at nine thirty-two. Would you mind getting the door?
I would not mind getting the door.
So.
Three point five three, actually. Three point five three.
Oh, we're in open session. I'm looking for a motion. On act, on a decision that was made in closed session. Would anyone like to make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion that for the next contract, the district administrator's salary be raised three point five three percent.
Second.
Three point five three?
Three point five two nine four one two.
Okay, so three point five three, three point five three percent.
Yes.
And, and that's not, just to clarify, that's not contract, that's this school year. Is that correct?
It's for July one to June thirtieth. So is it okay with the motion?
Okay.
Can, can I, who was the second? Mr. Nielsen, thank you.
So motion by Mr. Gamble, second by Mr. Nielsen, any discussion? Harry Ng, can we have a roll call, please?
Yes, Mr. Lewis.
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Gamble.
Aye.
Mrs. Evans.
Aye.
Mr. Nielsen.
Aye.
Mrs. Witkowski.
Aye.
I say yes.
Motion carries?
Six zero one absent.
Thank you. Okay, then we will move on to item twelve, future agenda items. If you want to write any of these dates down for your reference, we have the 4K program update on June twentieth, education for employment update, June twentieth, Saber Academy Report, June twentieth, the twenty eighteen nineteen budget presentation, June twentieth, Saber Center Report, July eleventh, and the library plan approval, which is also called the ITL.
It was previously called that.
What does ITL stand? What does that stand for again?
Information Technology Plan.
Plan on July eleventh, and then the twenty eighteen nineteen budget draft, number one, approval on July eleventh. Yes.
Can I, doesn't, because the school year starts on July one, don't we have to approve that before July one?
Uh, we used to do that, but we, we no, no longer have to do that anymore.
Okay. So we work without a budget for ten days?
It's not final until.
I, I understand.
Usually with the.
But at, at least it has board approval to move forward and pay whatever you have to pay, because otherwise technically you can't.
Well, we don't shut down. This is what Jim said, yeah, but, but Mr. Milzer said this is the date, correct?
It's running, right?
Yeah, so, but it's a, it's a question we can ask him.
Happy, happy to ask.
Yeah.
Last couple of years, that's how, that's how we've done it. There hasn't been any problems.
And then just.
Writing checks for eleven days. Right.
Yeah, first period is until after that. Now it gets charged against the prior year anyway.
That's true.
Or at least next few months.
And then just to clarify again.
Next few months, maybe.
We'll cancel our meeting for June twenty-seventh, and that's all we have right now then. And then item thirteen is school board meeting debriefing, any comments?
It's longer than I thought.
I, I do just want to say, though, regarding the communications report, the, the letter that went with it, there are a lot of acronyms in there and things, and I think we need to go back to not using so many acrimen. No, a staffing report, I'm sorry, staffing report, things that the public might see. We need to watch acronyms.
I'll look at that.
Yeah. Anything else?
Can this be put in?
Make sure we have those.
Board docs?
Absolutely.
Because this wasn't on the, this wasn't in the.
Right. I'll put that in there tomorrow for you so that you have all four documents.
No, there was only two in there, so I don't know.
The executive summary, I think, is what you're not seeing, and I didn't. And I didn't, not believe that was the executive summary. It's not the executive summary.
Doesn't say executive summary, it says summary.
I'll make sure you have all of those documents. I can post them in board docs tomorrow.
Thank you, thank you.
Then I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
So move. Second.
Motion by Mr. Nielsen, second by Mr. Gamble, all's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, adjourned at nine thirty-seven.